I'd like to call to order the meeting of the PBD City Council dated January 24, 7:30 PM. This meeting is being televised live on cable channel nine and is being taped by PBD Access Television and is being recorded by our city council stenographer. Please stand for a moment to silence. We're going to move to, under suspension of the rules, we're going to move to item 7(c). His honor, the mayor will take the podium.
Well, good evening, council. Thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me the opportunity to speak on the couple of appointments that I've made today. As we've talked in the past, and as all of you know, for the city to operate efficiently and to make progress, we need to have people that are willing to volunteer, help from the different boards and commissions across our community. Extremely important decisions are being made, policies are being created by people who care tremendously about the city. Many are here today, and you know many of those that give of themselves to improve our city and help in many different ways. And in most cases, it's without pay, and they're giving up time that they could be doing many other things. From the planning board to the zoning board, conservation commission, again, extremely important decisions and policies are being made. One commission that is very quiet, does a great deal behind the scenes, is the Park and Rec Commission. And we have had a long tradition of sports and recreation in our city. I think we have outstanding parks and recreational opportunities, the Brooksby Farm, Tilly's Farm, our golf course, and a whole number of other opportunities for people. And it's the Park and Rec Commission overseen by our Park and Rec Director, Jen Davis, that is responsible for a lot of that success and the improvements that we've made. We've had a couple of people that have had to resign, that have just done tremendous work for the city of Peabody. I wanted to mention their names today. Neil Price, who has been on the Park and Rec Commission for well over 25 years, somebody who's given a great deal to the city, has meant a great deal to many of us here today. And Ron Sheehan, who's also been a longtime member, I believe over 15 years. Both of those gentlemen wrote me lovely letters about how it's been wonderful to serve the city, but that they needed to step away at this time. And it gave us the opportunity to put in two more people that, again, care tremendously for the city and want to volunteer on the Park and Rec Commission. And we have two members of the community today that I'm very proud to nominate and ask for the appointment on. The first is Jeanette McGinn. I think all of you know Jeanette. She's been involved in really so many different programs, different projects here in our community. Most notably, she's done a terrific job lending her talents to the Tilly's Farm, doing outreach, education, and really, I can't, I'm very excited about the strides we've made in Tilly's Farm and the future that we're going to have there. And she's been instrumental, and I think even more so in the years ahead, as we build on that every year. Jeanette's been a big voice for Tilly's Farm and the opportunities and possibilities we have there for that. Very proud to ask for Jeanette McGinn to be appointed to the Park and Rec Commission. Also today, we have Robert Mareschi. Many of you know Rob. He's been very active in our community. He's a, works for the city of Everett, a purchasing agent. He's been in the PTO at the West School. He's been on the school council now for the last several years, even though he doesn't have kids at the school at this moment, at the Higgins Middle School. And he's been involved in coaching in a number of youth leagues as well. Two people that I think very highly of, that really care deeply for our city, that really entrenched in our community in so many different ways, and very proud to offer both of their names up today for nomination to the Park and Rec Commission. Both Jeanette and Rob are here today and certainly be willing to answer any questions and talk about their background. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. Can I get a motion to receive item 7(c)? So moved. All in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Counsel McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I need to recuse myself on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Would either, Jeanette McGinn, would you like to say a few words to the council? Or Rob, you're more than welcome to come up and introduce yourselves.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council. You know, I'll be brief, but, you know, being a municipal employee, I understand, you know, the importance of these boards and commissions throughout the city. And as I stated to you guys the last time when I was here, you know, it's an honor and I take great pride in, you know, the mayor and his, you know, his faith in me to be able to serve with pride and purpose on this committee. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
So, good evening, and it's a pleasure to be here tonight. And I just want to say, if there's one thing for certain, I truly enjoy and appreciate our parks and open spaces in Peabody. And I'm very grateful to the mayor for this appointment to the Parks and Rec Commission, and I look forward to serving the community in that capacity. And thank you all for your support, and I look forward to following in the footsteps of many other volunteers that have worked so hard and tirelessly for the, for the city and the Parks and Rec Commission. So, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Jeanette. Counselor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mayor, you've done it again. You have two outstanding candidates. I don't know Rob as well as I know Jeanette, but he comes highly recommended and can't say enough about Jeanette, all the good things that she does for the people of Peabody. And Rob, thank you for offering your talents. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And I'll just, I just want to say to Jeanette McGinn, as the Award One Counselor, I'm well aware of how much you've done at Tilly's Farm and with the Brown School and the programs that you've helped implement at the, at Tilly's. And I just want to say thank you on behalf of the people of Award One for everything you've done. And with that, I'll take a motion to approve.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Jeanette McGinn. Sorry, I didn't have my stuff on the screen. I hope that didn't go out the TV. Oh, well. Now, now they know I'm human, right? I'd like to make a motion to accept the mayor's recommendation to place Jeanette McGinn on the Park Commission for the term to expire 12/31/2019. It's a one-year term. And Robert Mareschi on the Park Commission for a three-year term to expire 12/31/2021. So moved.
Roll call, vote.
Counselors Metzulis.
Good choice, Mayor. Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Rozigmal.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Motion carries 10 to nothing.
Thank you, council.
We'll move to item 4(a), Counselor Saslaw.
Thank you. Motion to receive late communication on your desk from Attorney John D. Ayetta.
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
You'll notice that the applicant has requested a continuance at a later date. A motion, I'd like to make a motion to approve and continue to a later date.
All in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Item 4(b), clerk will read the, clerk will read the notice.
Notice is hereby given that the city council, the city of Peabody, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, January 24, 2019, at 7:30 PM in the Frank Awigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, Mass., on the application from Adelphia Seafoods DBAC, which restaurant, 203 Newbury Street, Peabody, Mass., requesting the transfer of an entertainment license for the use of televisions and internet music at said 203 Newbury Street, Peabody, Mass. Peabody City Council Counselor John G. Turco, City Council President.
Can you please give your name and address for the record?
Angelo Hasiotis, 203 Newbury Street, Peabody, Mass.
Thank you, sir. And you can give your reasons for requesting the transfer.
I'm, I'm here for the transfer, for a small TV for my patrons, and it was, been there all its life, and I just need it back if possible.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience here to speak in favor of the transfer? Is there anybody in the audience here to speak in opposition? Counselor Saslaw.
Thank you. So, for the general public, this is the Sea Witch Restaurant. Mr. Hasiotis is the original, the property owner. They're taking back the restaurant, which is a good thing. And just as a note of reference, there was a, I did confirm with the collector's office regarding a payment of taxes that was paid on January 7, 2019. In the interest of full disclosure, there was some interest too. There's a balance of $6.18 because the check's crossed in the mail, but they are up to date besides that balance of $6.18. I will, I will like to see the transfer go through and request that it does.
Any comment from the council? Seeing none, Counselor Saslaw.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
I'd like to approve the application from Adelphia Seafoods DBAC, which restaurant, 203 Newbury Street, Peabody, Mass., requesting the transfer of his entertainment license for the use of televisions and internet music at said 203 Newbury Street, Peabody, Mass. So moved.
Roll call, vote.
Counselors Metzulis.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozigmal.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to nothing.
Thank you very much.
Move to item 4(c). Clerk will read the notice.
Notice is hereby given that the city council, the city of Peabody, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, January 24, 2019, at 7:30 PM in the Frank Awigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, Mass., on the application from Giovanni Recupero Jr., care of Mike's Custom Auto Body, Inc., DBA Mike's Auto Sales, 100 Newbury Street Units, A1 and A2, Peabody, Mass., requesting the transfer of a Class II motor vehicle license at said 100 Bernie Street Units, A1 and A2, Peabody, Mass. Peabody City Council, Counselor John G. Turco, City Council President.
Is there a petitioner in the audience for this permit? Thank you, sir. Please state your name and address for the record. Press the button.
My name is Giovanni Recupero. I'm representing Mike's Auto Body, 100 Bernie Street, Peabody, Mass. My, my address is 87 Webster, my address, 87 Webster Street, East Boston, Massachusetts.
And could you just discuss a little bit of what you want to do with this location?
Sure. So I've been, I've been selling vehicles now for about 10 years. I'm really, I'm really just trying to venture out and try to see if, if maybe I could start something on my own. Plus, as well as try to maximize income for Mike's Auto Body. I'm representative for Mike's Auto Body today, so on behalf of Mike's Auto Body. So basically, we're just trying to utilize the tools that were given to us as far as the license transfer, which, the two-car license transfer. We're going to see if maybe we try to maximize our income or earn a potential with this license if you guys will grant us that.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody in the audience here to speak in favor of the petition? Anybody here to speak in favor? Anybody here in the audience to speak in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Come right up. Mr. Karamas, come right up to the podium. Sir, could you just step to the side for one moment? Thank you.
I'm actually in favor, but I have a, I have a question.
Okay, could you please state your name and address for the record?
John Karamas, 14 Sandra Road, Peabody.
And?
I am the trustee of the Bernie Foster condo trust on 100 Bernie Street. And I have nothing against him going for his Class II license and have a transfer there, but there is no parking there at all for any additional cars. We have a solid parking.
Move to receive. All in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
There's rules there, there's only, per unit, there's only two cars allowed to park overnight there. So there is absolutely no room for extra cars to park. If they want to buy and sell cars and do what they want to do and park them in the garage and in a different location, we have no objections to that if he wants to transfer his license there. The, Unit 2 down there, or Unit 6, is Deanna Rado. He's came through here, the same thing, and he's the same way. He has his Class II license there, but he doesn't store any cars there. And there was just no room down there at all to have that.
Thank you very much. If, anybody else in the audience to speak in opposition? Anybody to speak in opposition? Counsel McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Did I see, Mr. Soto was here earlier. Guess he's left the house. Thank you, Mr. President. Move to receive a late communication from DPS on this matter, so moved.
All in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I've spoken to the applicant, Mr. Recupero, who's the onsite manager. I also expected Mr. LaFace, the business owner, to be here this evening. He is here. Mr. LaFace, could you, could you come up here as well? Thank you. So my understanding is that the business was purchased by Mr. LaFace about six months And the counselors will note that there were two issues raised in the package, one by the Health Department and one by the collector's office. And I had spoken a few moments ago to one of the abutters, who I thought had an intention to speak this evening, but apparently has decided not to. But be that as it may, I'm very aware of these complaints, as I was involved with the residents throughout that process. I was involved with the Health Department, the Building Commissioner, and the Fire Department in this issue going back several years. So the most recent incident related to these complaints was in June of 2018, and the Health Department responded, and the business was found to be in compliance. Now, it's not 100% clear to me whether that was the prior owner or the current owner. And Mr. LaFace, maybe you could shed some light on that for me, if it was the current owner or the prior owner, but just, you, the prior owner.
The new owner.
The other new owner, I realize that. So in that, so it was the prior owner, it was, yeah, that's right.
Excuse me, sir. For the record, could you just speak into the mic and turn the mic, press the button?
All right. So it was the, I'm the current owner.
Yeah, I understand that, Mr. LaFace. So the, the clarification that I'm seeking for the purpose of the council is whether, when, when the business was found to be in compliance, did you own the business at that moment in time, or was it owned by the prior owner? And I think you were telling me it was the prior owner, right?
Yes, the prior owner.
Okay, so that's, that's fine. I just want that to be clear. So I, when I spoke to your onsite manager, he indicated to me that you have every intention of remaining in full compliance with the directives from the, from the Health Department with respect to the issues that were related to the orders coming from the process. Is that correct? Could you just turn your mic on?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. So, and I, I just want to make sure, so that nothing is lost in, in this transfer of ownership. And for the record, I want to provide Mr. LaFace with a copy of the communication from the Health Department that would, that involved, again, the Fire Department and the Building Commissioner and so forth, with, with this communication from November 29, 2016. So I want to, I want to give him that tonight, so we make sure for the record that he has this in his possession and that his intention is to maintain compliance with, with, with what was spelled out in this. Is, is fair enough?
Fair enough, yes. Thank you.
So I think with, with the, with the measures that were taken by the prior owner and the commitment with, by the current owner to make sure that these issues remain in check, I, that, that becomes a lesser issue for me, but to the extent there's additional complaints, we're going to, that, you know, the city is going to be very active in addressing those with you. So just, just be aware, we need, we, you know, you've, you've got neighbors that are extremely close to your operation there, and we need you to do the right thing with respect to your ongoing operations. And I appreciate your, your commitment that you made here tonight. Also in the package, there was a tax issue raised, and this involves both excise and personal property tax. And the collector, the collector's office through the clerk has communicated to the applicant that they are not, not responsible for the prior owner's personal property tax. So that's, of the amounts that you saw in the package, that's $433.65. So, so that, they have it in writing from the collector via the clerk, that they're not responsible for that, for that portion of it, and that correct him to, and Tim is, Tim is acknowledging that. So regarding the excise tax portion, my understanding, and that's $232.52, my, my understanding is it was your intention to settle that. Is that correct?
If it's mine, I'll settle it. I'm, I'm not sure what year that, that's from.
Right.
Because I only have one truck registered.
Yeah, I understand there's some potential mitigating circumstances, but, you know, I think the clerk also communicated to you the information from the collector that that's at your own peril, because if those vehicles, if there's excise tax interhares on that, they're not, you're not going to be able to register those vehicles. So, so, you know, my expectation is that you're going to settle those back taxes, which is to your, for your own benefit. And we're not, certainly not talking about a lot of money here.
All right.
Fair enough?
We'll start with, yes.
Thank you. Okay, so based on those issues being satisfactorily addressed, I'm supportive of this transfer. With respect to the parking issue that was raised by Mr. Karamas, that's, that's new to me. I, I was unaware of this issue. But I will say that this is a transfer. This is not a new license, and the, the, the limit on the license is, is two vehicles. So I'm not clear how this becomes an issue as a function of a transfer if it wasn't an issue with the previous property owner. So if we could get Mr. Karamas back up here to, to maybe comment on that, I would appreciate it.
Well, can I just say something? I mean, I own three.
Hold on. Can I get Mr. Karamas up here?
Mr. Karamas, could you please come back to the podium? I'm not sure if you could hear the commentary. I know the sound system is a little off.
Thank you, Mr. Karamas. In case you weren't able to hear, I, the question I had, because I was unaware of the parking limitation issue that you raised, and this is a license transfer, this is not a new license, and the limitation on the license is two vehicles. So what I'm, what I'm unclear on is how this was okay for the prior owner, but now not okay somehow. It's two vehicles. That, he's strictly limited on the license to two vehicles. So does that, is that satisfactory to, that delays, that delays your concern? There is no, he has no ability in this transfer to go to six cars. This is a two-car license. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. With that, I'd, I'd open this up to other counselors for comment.
Seeing none, Counsel McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to close the public hearing.
All in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve the application of Giovanni Recupero Jr., care of Mike's Custom Auto Body, Inc., doing business as Mike's Auto Sales, 100 Bernie Street Units, A1 and A2, Peabody, Mass., requesting the transfer of a Class A motor vehicle license at said 100 Bernie Street Units, A1 and A2, Peabody, Mass., with the same restrictions listed on the original license. So moved.
Roll call, vote.
Counselors Metzulis.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozigmal.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to nothing.
Move to item 4d. Clerk will read the notice.
Notice is hereby given that the city council, the city of Peabody, acting as a special permitting authority, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, January 24, 2019, at 7:30 PM in the Frank Awigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, Mass. On the application from AA8 Northeast, 110 Royal Little Drive, Providence, Rhode Island, for a special permit seeking to operate a trucking terminal with truck repair and maintenance services with no outdoor storage at 7 Lakeland Park Drive, Peabody, Mass., as filed in accordance with section 6.6.4b, 6.1, 11, 12, and 15.7 of the Peabody zoning ordinance. Peabody City Council Counselor John G. Turco, City Council President.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the city council. My name is John Kelty. I'm an attorney, and I practice large 40 Lowell Street here in Peabody, Massachusetts. And I appear this evening on behalf of AAA, John Galvin, CEO and President of AAA Northeast, who are located at 110 Royal Little Drive in Providence, Rhode Island. We're here to speak to you about the property at 7 Lakeland Park, which is owned by the Stefan Costa trustee and Paul Costa. They are the owners of the property. They have entered into a purchase and sale agreement with AAA Northeast, which was the result of some competition with respect to offers for the property. As it turns out, AAA Northeast was the winning bidder, if you will, and they have come forward seeking a special permit to convert the existing structure from a machine shop to a special permit use as set forth in section 664b, 11 and 12, which is to operate a trucking terminal with truck repair and maintenance services with no outdoor storage of motor vehicles, of unregistered or unregistered motor vehicles. All of the uses will be within the structure with the exception of employee and fleet parking at the outside of the structure. We're proposing that our hours are, actually, we are at 24/7, we are 365 days, 24/7 days a week, 24 hours a day service. AAA services only its club members. We are, they're only its club members. There are some 5.7 million club members here in the United States. There are 2.2 million members of AAA here in Massachusetts. One out of every two drivers here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is a member of AAA. It's important to note, inasmuch as I am mindful of some of the neighbors who are here this evening, it's important to note that AAA does not compete at all with any local towing companies with respect to police calls, with respect to local police calls, state police calls. They do not service the only people that AAA services are their membership. We are mindful of the fact that we have stated, we have in our possession the notice of public hearing this evening, and then there were reports given to us, memorandums given under date of January 10 from the City of PBD Community Development Department and Planning Department. We have a no objection response from the PBD Fire Department saying that any changes in the fire alarm service must need be approved by them. We have Public Services having said that all internal floor drains shall be properly routed through an oil-water separator. We're in total agreement with that. Any permit we pull, any modification to any of the existing drains would need to be approved by the City Public Services Department. Conservation Commission has weighed in that they are aware that there is a small stormwater storage facility adjacent to us, which I think has become somewhat overgrown with vegetative species which deserve wetland protection. Our purposes with respect to this permit are striping and the exterior of the premises only. There'll be no reconstruction of the parking lot. There'll be no addition to the parking lot, and there'll be no issues with respect to redeveloping stormwater management areas or the like. We are mindful of the fact that there is some concern about congestion. I think it's important that we try to relate to the City Council what it is that AAA does with respect to that congestion issue when they operate a facility such as this one. They operate, they run 24/7, 365 days a year. There are three shifts. However, within those shifts, there are sort of micro shifts. So for instance, in that first shift in the morning, when we are seeing the first crews coming on premises, that shift actually is broken into a different kind of shift analysis. So for instance, in North Andover, where we have a facility that operates immediately adjacent to the police station on 49 Orchard Hill Road, there are people that begin that shift at 5:00 a.m. At 5:00 a.m., there are only three people coming on to the site. They park their car, pick up the vehicle, and away they go. They are not on the premises for the next eight, seven or eight hours. At 6:00 o'clock, part of that morning shift, 6:00 a.m., for instance, in North Andover, there are 1, 2, 3, 4 people that come on the premises. At 7:00 o'clock, there are only two people that come on the premises. At 7:30, there are two more that come on the premises. At 8:00, two. 9:30, two. 10:00, four come on to the premises. And once again, they park their vehicle, they take the vehicle, and then that vehicle is off the premises for the entire day. At 12:30, there are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 that will come on to that shift, because that's, I believe, the beginning of the new shift for the midday, and then the same repeats itself throughout the night. So with respect to, we don't have concerns about congestion, because my clients have been down this road before. This is the way they operate East Providence. This is the way they operate that North Andover facility. And AAA staggers its shifts not to be during typical rush hour times. For example, the second shift starts at 2:00 in the afternoon so that our AAA vehicles are already out in the market before the heavy traffic, which is our 4 through 6 o'clock hours, before they come upon that kind of traffic volume. The AAA vehicles leave for a shift. They stay out in the field servicing members, and therefore they do not come back to home base until a shift change, which greatly reduces the traffic concerns in the immediate area of 7 Lakeland Park. As you know, our immediate neighbor is, as you probably know, is Federal Express. Federal Express operations work in a different manner. They spend most of the early morning hours loading up for their first morning. There's a parade of vehicles that leave the premises in anticipation of 10:00 deliveries. Most of the FedEx deliveries that are coming out of that Lakeland Park facility are coming out for very, very local, very, very local deliveries. In fact, I've been able to witness the parade of vehicles that heads over to Centennial Park almost on a daily basis, servicing clientele there. Our shifts are such that we will not be really competing in those peak hours with, our people will already be gone on the road, and they will have already swapped out their vehicles. Once again, we do not do any private towing. We do not do any municipal estate towing. The more resources that we have in a regional area, the better the response times for AAA will have for its members. I believe our biggest vendor in the current region, PBD, I believe that's Gator Towing. There have, over the years, been people that have been affiliated. Gator, in my estimation, is the only very local vendor that we have signed up. There was a company out of Nahant and Lynn that used to be a vendor, but what my clients are informing me is people that in general tow for a career and for a business, not always do they have a succession plan. So as the people that founded that business get a little older and maybe a little more tired of that business, there isn't always a person in place to take up that vendor status with AAA. As over a period of years, as AAA sees that as a sort of a hazard of the industry, they have begun opening these regional facilities where they are focused on servicing their clientele. Our region here in PBD will be servicing roughly 10-mile radius. There are facilities in North Andover, East Providence, in the south of Worcester, and those are the four general service bases that are going to be, that are going to be here in eastern Massachusetts, serving their 2.2 million clientele here in Massachusetts. Another important issue is, I think that sometimes competitors become concerned that they may poach drivers from an existing company and bring them to this particular facility to work for AAA. AAA's experience has been that 80-plus percent of their drivers are first-time drivers, that they are training, that they are putting in a position to service our clientele. They like it in that way because they get to train their drivers with respect to all their customer service and customer relations. Those are important aspects of the AAA program and experience. We-- The company has been in existence for 118 years. We are located in many, many regions nationally. This somewhat regional focus is something new to address the need to be able to properly service our vendors as they call and when they call. I, in the summer, was returning from Old Orchard Beach, Maine, and our car broke down, and we called AAA. We were picked up on the highway in Kittery, taken to Foster Street in PBD with our vehicle, and that person that was servicing that particular road call was from southern New Hampshire, answering a Kittery, Maine call to take to PBD. So as time goes on, you know, these radiuses change. That was a local vendor who had a relationship with AAA. That person responded, you know, fulfilled our needs that evening. And what we're trying to do this evening is create one of these regional facilities that will be able to service the clientele that's out there, both existing and growing. I have a picture, which I got offline today, and I think I have several that I can circulate. And this happens to be a picture which, when I went online, I realized how similar the North Andover property was. This is the same facility, and what it shows is--
All in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
What it shows is the condition of the premises almost midday. It was a random shot taken by Google Maps. It's the same building, and what it depicts is that at midday, on any given day, that parking lot is virtually, there are 39 vehicles that operate out of that North Andover facility. And what that is demonstrating to us is the lack of vehicles that are on the property at any one given time based on shifts and based on the ability to, you know, swap out your passenger car for the vehicle which is in question. We've taken the time to address each of the issues that were raised in the community development memorandum. We, the application had, community development memorandum says that the application states that there'll be 45 vehicles parking on-site and 42 off-street spaces. There are no, they're all off-street in the sense that they are all located within our building parking area. There are no off-street parking such that we would not be parking out on Lakeland, no interference with Forest Street, any such thing. The, my application was revised to show that all the parking will be on-site, and that was revised by the plan that had been submitted with your applications. We've gone over the issue of the three shifts and how those shifts are staggered, and how people come on to the premises and how they exit the premises. With respect to snow removal, the south side of the premises, which is something of a slight embankment and away from our wetland areas, that would be the area in which we would be happy to store snow. If we got a snowstorm such that we were inundated with snow, then it would, it must need be removed, because we need the parking lot to become available to us at all times. I've already gone over the fire department comments. I've gone over the public services comments. We have, Conservation Commission, we've addressed, and I'm happy to answer questions that the board, the commission, may have this evening. And I have several representatives. I have the owner and his attorney. I have several representatives from the East Providence branch of AAA, and we're happy to answer questions that the council may have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Kelty. Is there anybody here in the audience to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody in the audience here to speak in favor? Anybody in the audience here to speak in opposition to this petition? Please come to the podium. Anybody in opposition, you can just come to the podium and wait in line. Thank you, sir. Just press the button to speak and then state your name and address for the record.
Sure. My name is Randy Good, and I'm the owner of the FedEx facility at 9 Lakeland Park Drive, and I reside in Virginia Beach, Virginia.
Thank you. And can you state your opposition?
Yeah, multifold. The main opposition is traffic congestion, both at the intersections of Forest and Route 1, and also congestion within the park itself. And I'll be happy to address those issues when you're ready for me.
Sure. While you have the microphone, if you'd like to address the council with your issues.
Okay.
Get them all here. Thank you.
Quick background. The facility at 9 Lakeland Park Drive was built in 1986 for FedEx. They've been there since that time. I've owned it since 1997, expanded it in 2002. So I have a large degree of time with FedEx, familiarity with them, what their issues are with the park in the area. And at this point, a move with 45 more trucks trying to get in and out of the park, regardless of the method that representative for that project laid out, will likely push them in a direction to look elsewhere. Over the time, there's been, you know, massive increases in very large truck traffic, making that interchange, the ability to get out in either direction from Forest Street, to be difficult in adding 45 more vehicles to an area that has, you know, 200 to 300 vehicles right in that local area that reside there, that come and go, as well as, I'm sure you're all familiar with, the area, the transfer facility, a number of other businesses, Costello's, that are bringing large garbage trucks, 18-wheelers, in and out all the time, creating difficulty as they're coming in off Route 1 where they have to cross over two lanes, and Forest Street is a bit of a cut-through for regular cars. So traffic gets lined up, because as trucks are trying to get in off of Route 1, they're taking up both lanes to do that. Cars are trying to cut through the gas station there and enter Route 1. So FedEx drivers themselves, regardless of the time of day, oftentimes find it very difficult to get out and get their routes done. In addition to that, the activity within the park and around the park has caused Lakeland Park Drive to be used as a truck stop in itself at times. There is the truck stop right on the corner, another transfer facility, truck depot that's being built around the corner, which is causing a lot of large truck activity there and congesting the area, making it difficult with the infrastructure that's in place as it is. And so I'm sure the presentation, you know, has it laid out, practiced? We all know it doesn't work that way. There's 42 spots planned, 35 employees at a time, presumably each with a car, 45 trucks. There's only seven extra spots. There's going to be trucks that are sitting out in the street. There's going to be trucks that are trying to find a place. Cars, employees coming in trying to find a place, added to the congestion that's there. Obviously, I'd like to keep, you know, FedEx as a tenant in my property. They've been, you know, a great, you know, corporate community member for 30-plus years. I've been with them for 20-plus years, you know, in that facility. And this is taking that area of PBD and that infrastructure and taking it over the limit, taxing it over the limit in terms of the activity there. That's my main objection. Overall, within the intersection and as described in the actual facility itself, you know, the 9 Lakeland Park Drive itself.
Thank you very much, sir. Is there anybody else in the audience to speak in opposition to this permit? Please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Larry Alcott. I live at 269 Forest Street, PBD. I have several concerns about AAA moving in to Lakeland Park Drive. My number one concern is the traffic. The traffic on-- The traffic on Forest Street now, as was previously mentioned, Forest Street is used as a cut-through. And that intersection going out onto Route 1's on any given day is a nightmare. There's cars that have to cut through the gas station because they can't get out to the end of the road because there's trucks that come out of a truck station. And then you have Castella on one side and you have Republic on the other. And it's just a... It's a nightmare there. And concerns to Lakeland Park Drive, as a previous gentleman mentioned about the parking spaces, I didn't hear anything about how many parking spaces they're looking for. But if they're looking for 42 to 45 parking spaces, I think I read somewhere, I don't believe that the property provides that kind of parking. And in Lakeland Park itself, it can be a nightmare getting in and out of there because recently the road truck drivers, when the truck stop gets over... The overflow from the truck stop, they're now parking in the fire lane on Lakeland Park Drive. They park their trucks there Friday night and they come back Monday morning and get them. So there's being... You know, they're trying to use it as like a truck parking place on... In the fire lane. So that, you know, as far as a 24/7, 365-day operation going out of there, and, you know, staggering the equipment is all well and good. I understand all that. But it's still, if you're amounting to that many vehicles and cars, you know, if somebody... If you bring a car in and take a truck, you know, and you've got 45 vehicles in there, right? It's not qualified. And with respect to the fire department, I don't know if they check the sprinkler systems in there or not. But if you know anything about Lakeland Park Drive, there is no water pressure up there at all. It's very little... The water pressure up there is maybe 15 pounds if you're lucky. There's no water pressure at all up in Lakeland Park Drive. And I very seriously doubt there's enough water pressure to operate the sprinkler systems in that building. I know several other buildings up there have that problem. And so, you know, for those reasons. But my biggest concern is the traffic. I mean, the traffic out there, we've had... Wood Trucking owns some animals as it is now. And I lived there. And I've seen several birds get hit. I've seen other animals get run over because it's supposed to be a 25 mile an hour speed limit, but people go up there about 60 trying to get... Trying to get out of there, you know? And there are some... There are some problems up there as far as traffic. And you're going to have a new truck stop going in down on Farm Ave. And the traffic going into there and coming out of there is going to be tough. I mean, it's going to be a trucking terminal. And if you know anything about trucking terminals, they operate pretty much around the clock too. And they do a lot of business because they're transferring freight all the time. You know, I just don't... I'm not against AAA coming into the area. I just think there's better locations. I think there's other locations in the park that would be much more suitable to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alcott. Anybody else in the audience to speak in opposition to this permit? Seeing none, Council Sasso.
Thank you, Council President. So I have a couple of questions of the petitioner, just to get some clarification. So we're talking about 45 vehicles that'll be going out and leaving the park. And I think I saw in the application, it was vans, tow trucks, and flatbeds. So obviously, at some point, all 45 of those vehicles will be out in the field. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And how many employees will be inside the building doing the office staff that you... I think I saw two shifts of 70 people over two shifts?
My name is John Nadelillo. I work for AAA Northeast. My responsibilities include automotive services.
Let me speak up.
I'm sorry. John Nadelillo from AAA Northeast. I'm responsible for automotive services, which includes our club-owned fleet. Of the vehicles that are there, half of them will be light service vehicles. So they will be F-150 Ranger trucks to perform light service-type duties, jump starts, flat tires, lockouts. And there will be very limited folks at the facility once the trucks are on the road. We will have a mechanic there and maybe a couple of administrative individuals. Our business doesn't lend itself to everyone going out and coming in at the same time, as you can imagine, as members continue to need service. So we do stagger them. And over a period of time, as you heard, you know, there are two or three trucks that are leaving every half hour or an hour. So from in terms of congestion, it's very, very minimal, if any, you know, contributing. One of the things I'd like to say, within that location, in a 10-mile radius of that location, this past year, we had just shy of 200,000 members request roadside assistance. And the reason we believe that's a perfect location for us is that we have an opportunity to provide a better service experience to folks that break down at the roadside, making our roads safer and helping and serving the motoring public.
So I want to go back to my question. So you have 45 vehicles out on the road.
Yes.
I assume that the height of your office staff would be 9:00 to 5:00. Is that a fear?
Might be a little earlier, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. There might be a couple of supervisors to oversee the staff that's out on the road till 11:00 PM. But then from 11:00 PM to 6:00 or 7:00 AM, there won't be any administrative staff there.
So 10:00 to 15:00 probably maximum office staff?
Less than that, probably 8 to 10 tops.
Okay. And so how many spaces are on the property now?
45.
And when you have a flatbed, does a flatbed take up more than one space?
About a space and a half. But as I said, in terms of flatbed, so if you take a look at the number of trucks, half of those trucks are going to be light service vehicles. The other half will be a blend of tow trucks, which is one parking space, and flatbeds. So the flatbeds will be a small percent of the total.
So how come you chose to put in the application to close from midnight till 5:00 AM? Because I assume your 2.2 million customers in Massachusetts expect service 24/7.
Yes. We dispatch electronically to our trucks. Our call center isn't there. Our calls... We have five call centers throughout AAA Northeast. So we... The calls go directly from the call center to the drivers out on the road. So the... I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just... So why not just go 24/7? I'm just curious why you're choosing... Your business model is to go 24/7, 365, but you're shutting down the operation from midnight to 5:00. I'm just trying to understand that.
Well, we're shutting down the administrative operation, let's say. So we won't have any mechanics there. We won't have, you know, a secretary there, those types of things. But our road service is 24/7. So our technicians will be on the road 24/7 servicing members. So the building, there won't be any administrative staff, mechanics, so on and so forth, in the building after 5:00.
From midnight to... But from midnight to 5:00 AM, is there a possibility that you might need to bring a vehicle back in?
And the technicians will have access to do that.
So it is a 24-hour, 24/7-hour operation? I understand you might not have staff, but...
Right.
If there's a need to bring in a vehicle off the road, you might get a flat tire. One of your vehicles might have an issue.
They'll have to go back and switch trucks, yes.
Okay. My next question is, I assume like this past week, we had a very cold day. You folks look at the weather forecast, and if it's going to be zero with a wind chill factor of minus 10 to 20, I assume you're going to have more than two people come in at 5:00 AM, aren't you, to do a truck? Wouldn't you ramp up to try and service your members based upon the weather conditions?
We will maybe have a few more folks coming early, but you also got to understand that you can't rob Peter to pay Paul, right? So we will have folks in the afternoon. And if we take those folks from the afternoon and bring them to the morning, we won't have enough staff to work out of that area. Our goal to move into that area is really to complement our existing service providers that we have in that area. So it's not to take over a territory. It's really to fill in some of the gaps that we have in servicing members that need us.
Counsel, can you get the microphone?
Sure. I saw it said trucking terminal with truck repair and maintenance services and no outdoor storage. I didn't understand quite what you meant when you said no outdoor storage. What were you trying to say that you weren't going to store outside? Why did you put that in there?
In terms of outdoor storage, I may have missed the first part of your question. I apologize.
So your application states a trucking terminal with truck repair and maintenance services with no outdoor storage. What are you trying to tell me? What were you... What are you not going to store outside? I don't understand why you... Why that verbiage is even in there for the special permit.
There would be no unregistered vehicles or vehicles without plates or any such things. So there's none of that storage. There's no equipment storage.
Okay. So I know that Federal Express, when they go home at night, all their vehicles are stored inside. Where will your vehicles be stored?
Outside.
And the inside will be just used for repair?
It'll be storage. It'll be repair, you know, mechanic. There will be some administrative offices for the administrative staff.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion, receive photos that I... That were put on everyone's desk this evening. Motion received on the suspension rules.
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
So it's been expressed by some of the... By one of the neighbors in opposition. The problem, the issue that is of great concern to myself is the fact that if you look at that stretch of roadway, first of all, you have a very unique situation. You have a stoplight on a highway. It doesn't happen that often. I can't really cite any off the top of my head at all. Here's the good part about that. The good part about it is that that traffic has to stop for a certain period of time. And when it stops, those vehicles off of Forest Street are getting out onto Route 1. But when it doesn't stop, there's an issue because they're coming down the road. And I'm going to go back to that, but I want to go to turning into Forest, first of all. So you have a recycling facility. You have a Dunkin' Donuts. You have a Best Gas Station that has anywhere from 20 to 25 overnight truckers, and you're a very successful restaurant called Red's. That's not all the business, but that's the majority. So as traffic is coming north, the issue is that the trucks are turning right onto Forest Street. And what's very unique, and if you look in the first picture, I don't know why it happened, but someone in their infinite wisdom, and I do mean it wisdom, they put these red concrete barriers so that if trucks took the top... Took it too tight, they would not knock out that other barrier. And I think it's there for a reason. And it's not just one. There's about four or five of those pylons. And we know that those trucks have to take a wide turn. And the issue that we're having is that when you have another major truck leaving Forest Street to go on a right to Route 1, they're waiting to get... They're waiting for that truck to pass. And I believe one of the pictures shows a trucking queue waiting for the other truck to leave. I don't believe it's a part of this, but actually, the second truck, that George truck, possibly might be doing that. But I've seen it and I've witnessed it firsthand. The other issue I have is that many of us have been to Red's, a successful business. And because of that, unfortunately, many times when there's an overflow, people park on Forest Street. Not just on one side, but actually on both sides, especially on weekends and on holiday weekends. It's pretty much guaranteed. So now you have an area that has a narrow roadway to start. In addition, when Red's is its height of business, there are cars that are parking there. If I'm going to go the other way, and now we'll go back to pulling out onto Route 1. So when we... When trucks are pulling out onto Route 1 north, they're waiting for that queue. They're hoping for that light to stop and hopefully they can get out. But what's happening is unfortunately, people are impatient. And I... And I'll give you a firsthand account. I was down there on Monday night. Monday night was the night after the storm. It was very, very cold. And I went into Red's. I went behind Red's and I needed to get some air. So I decided I was going to pull into the mobile gas station, the Mobile Mart. And Mobile Mart has an air machine slash vacuum machine. I pulled up and I waited in line because there was someone getting air. I'm outside of my car and all of a sudden, come bombing through the parking lot is a Peabody oil truck. And I'll leave their name out of it. But they did exactly what cars do there frequently. They use it as a cut-through because they don't have the patience to wait for the trucks to get out. I've seen it. I witnessed it. And it's the situation, and I appreciate the ramp up and the ramp down, but I'm not so sure that really benefits you because in reality, if you have 45 trucks and you ramp up and you ramp down, you might have one person... Excuse me, three people. I think you use the term microshifts. If you have three shifts of seven or eight hours apiece and you have 45 people every shift, that's 45 people coming out with their car, picking up their truck, and then doing it all over again two more times. I just see this as exacerbating the situation even further. And what's interesting is I don't know why I got the name 7 Lakeland Park Drive. It's not a park, folks. It's a cul-de-sac surrounded by businesses. It's not an industrial park. It's not a park. The name is Lakeland Park Drive, but I can tell you, it is a business... It is a cul-de-sac surrounded by businesses. As was stated through the petition on the previous business, it was a machine shop. People went in there, they did their work, and they went home. And I think that's the type of business that lends itself, not to, you know, a trucking terminal. Because that's the verbiage that the petitioner uses. It's not an appropriate place for trucking terminal. It absolutely is not. You know, so between the cut-through, and you've heard me talk about this on the other side of Route 1, and I have to talk about it on Route 1 north, there's no deceleration-acceleration lane. That's the issue. There is none. And I don't see anyone coming. I don't see any eminent domain taken by the state. It's just an issue that is there. Forest Street has gotten more and more traffic. Anytime we increase the occupancy of Centennial Industrial Park, that's going to be a way that people are going to use that road. And so for those reasons, as I said, I look at it as a congested area. By approving this, it's only going to exacerbate the situation. I will go back. I'll just give you the courtesy. You said you answered all the questions of community development. I don't... I didn't see where in your... You said that you need... You might need 42 off-street additional spaces. I just think if you have 45 vehicles and then you're stating that you might need 42 off-street, I don't see 42 off-street parking spaces available on a regular basis there. So I don't know where you're looking to go. And community development says, confirm with the applicant where the additional spaces, if needed, will be located. I don't see 42 spaces. Maybe it's for everybody, but it's not for you. I don't think that... To take that type of logic that you might need them and they're there, I don't see it and I don't think it's appropriate just to... You know, you put it in there and I don't think it's appropriate to think that they're I also think that, you know, you have 2.2 million members, one out of every two drivers at AAA. You're certainly not going to decrease your traffic there. You're certainly going to grow your business. You're certainly going to increase. I... No, I get... God bless, I get... I have two teenagers and I get... I get applications to AAA and God bless you, it's good for your marketing. I get them at least quarterly asking me to join. So you're not looking to decrease your customer base. You're looking to increase it. I don't blame you. I think it's a good... A good situation for your company. But as far as this location, this spot, and I just... I'll close with this. Castella Waste Management, 60 trucks. Republic Services, that's a transfer station, folks. I can't tell you how many trucks are going in and out of there. It's a transfer station. They dump and they leave. Wood Trucking, 67 trucks. Federal Express, 62 trucks. JRM, four trucks. CTW, seven trucks. Best Gas, 20 to 25 overnight guests. And lastly, Triangle in there on Peabody Dump Day once a month. They're backed up onto Route 1. Backed up onto Route 1. Peabody Dump Day, that's a minimum once a month. So for those reasons that I have expressed, I unfortunately cannot support the application for us tonight. Thank you.
Anybody from the council?
May I have the floor?
Go ahead, sir.
May I? I guess I would say our brand represents safety, security, and peace of mind. We not only... Road service is not only our core service, helping and serving members, but advocacy is also one of our biggest missions, to make roads safer. So our involvement in the community, I think, would only help that. And you speak a lot about the congestion and... And you speak a lot about the congestion and traffic. I think all the more reason to have a presence that, in that congestion and breakdowns and so on and so forth, that we're able to get to those situations in an expedited manner to clear the roads, to help those members that are broken down. And we are a membership organization, and we help and serve our members. But rest assured, if we come across a broken-down motorist, and they're not a member, we will help and serve, because that's what we do. So, because of that congestion, all of the more reason to have a presence there to try to help and support, because where we are now, you know, those breakdowns are delayed, causing more of a hazard in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. It's open to the council. Anybody from the council? Any comments? Seeing none, Councilor Sassla.
So, just in response to your last question...
I'm sorry, I missed Councilor Melville.
Thank you very much.
Councilor Melville.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. You know, I appreciate what AAA is saying here tonight, and I, you know, when I got calls from residents about this particular special permit, I went out there with the idea of trying to find the best way possible to make this work. You know, when I went and viewed the, did my due diligence, like I try to do with every special permit, what really, to me, what turned it from me personally, was when I saw what this addition is going to be. And I, and you guys are a national brand in safety, and I completely agree with you on, and support what you're going with that. My only issue is that from Forest Street, the Route One entrance to Forest Street, to the Lakeland Park, there's seven curb cuts to industrial, essentially trucking or terminal-based operations. And Lakeland Park itself has its own, as Councilor Sassla brought up, it's more of a cul-de-sac than it is anything else. You know, when I was speaking with the residents, I tried to alleviate and come up with reasons for how we could, you know, see how this would work, and try to talk about the business and whatnot. And as I was doing it, the backup occurred, and some big trucks came in, and they were moderately sized, too. They were the F-150s, and the, some larger commercial vehicles came on, as I was trying to explain away how this would be okay. And to me, that really, as the residents pointed out, and as the gentleman that operates another building, this is in addition to what we've already approved, and that's already operating out of there. And, you know, I agree with Councilor Sassla on some of his concerns with regards to the safety. I just wasn't able to come up with a good reason to tell the residents to allow that to move forward. So, I appreciate AAA wanting to come to Peabody. I think it, you know, I have no issue with your business being in this area, it's more of the location that concerned me. And to exacerbate what is already a difficult situation is what concerned me as a counselor. So, thank you.
Any other councilors? Mr. Good has asked that he just respond, so I'm going to allow him another. So, just be brief, please. Thank you.
Very brief, I appreciate it. Councilman, you did a much better job than I did describing the congestion there. The main point, I think, to you guys is that the issue is not too much stuff going out at one time in the morning or coming back at night. The issue there is all day long. And about half the FedEx fleet goes out in the morning, comes back late in the day, the other half goes out and back twice in a day with different stuff. Their issue is not being able to get that half of the fleet in and out on a regular basis, because of backups on Route One, issues that we've talked about here. And so, adding another, you know, if it's an eight-hour shift, and it's 45 trucks, that's five trucks an hour, coming and going every hour, if everything is smooth, employees coming and going at that same pace, all during the day, backing up further on Route One. And that's, it doesn't, your business model doesn't solve the issue there, is the main point I wanted to emphasize. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilor Sassla.
Thank you. And just one point, and I appreciate it, but you made the point, AAA, that, I'm sorry, I apologize, I forget your first name, sir, but congestion, in that your job is to, if there's a car broken down, you'll help, and you'll move the congestion. But we don't have congestion because of cars breaking down. We have congestion because of the heavy truck and car activity on the road, not because of cars breaking down. So, I just, you know, wanted to say that. But that being said, motion to close the public hearing.
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to deny the application from AAA Northeast 110 Royal Little Drive, Providence, Rhode Island, for a special permit seeking to operate a trucking terminal with truck repair and maintenance services with no outside storage at Seven Lakeland Park Drive. Peabody, Mass. is filed in accordance with Sections 6.6.4b, 6.1, 11, 12, and 15.7 of the Peabody zoning ordinance. And the reasons for my, amongst others, the reasons I'll state for the denial, request for denial, is that there is not a local desirable need for an additional trucking terminal at that location. And I do believe that it would exacerbate an already, it would exacerbate an already trucking and vehicle traffic congestion, and it could lead to the further, further vehicle issues, and also illegal activity as far as motor vehicle activity in the area, i.e. cars cutting through Mobile Mart on a regular basis. So moved. Looking for a yes vote to deny. Thank you.
On the motion, roll call vote.
Councilors Mazzullis?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
O'Neill?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Rozignol?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Yes.
Sassla?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Grevell?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Motion carries 11-0.
Thank you. And Councilor Sassla, we're going to move back to you for item five, reports on committees. It's the Ad Hoc Committee on Taxis, Limousines, and Ride Shares.
Thank you, Council President. Earlier this evening, we had a meeting of the Subcommittee on Taxis, Limousine Rides, Chair Committee. Present on the committee itself was Council Manning Martin, Council Charis, myself, and all other members of the City Council, except for our good friend, Council Grevell. This issue was, we had Deputy Chief Marty Cohane in attendance, and Marty basically outlined the issue of basically cab companies that weren't licensed picking up at the, mainly the North Shore Shopping Center. And this had been carried over from last year. They drafted some language, and the language that has been drafted will be advertised in ordinance. And to surmise the ordinance, what we're going to do is, any abutting community with a regional dispatch center, abutting community to Peabody with a regional dispatch center, will be given the opportunity to have two cars registered with the city of Peabody. And once registered, and paying the fee outlined in the ordinance, they will then go to the police force to get inspection, and a decal to put on their vehicle, to identify them as being, operating under the ordinance. In addition, we changed the fine structure. We are going to go with the general penalty, which would be first offense $300, second offense $300, third offense revocation. And we, the committee voted 3-0 unanimously to advertise and adopt said ordinance.
Can I get a motion to approve? Oh, that was the motion. All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Thank you. Motions, orders, and resolutions. Councilor Mazzullis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under suspension of rules, I'd like to go to item 8F and refer to the meeting a little later on. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Also, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go to item 8H, and also refer that to the next meeting coming up.
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilor Melville.
I have no motions this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Melville. Councilor O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. No motions tonight.
Thank you, sir. Councilor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. No motions.
Thank you, Councilor McGinn. Councilor Rozignol.
No motions at this time.
Thank you. Councilman Manning Martin.
No motions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Councilor Sassla.
Yes, under suspension of rules, motion to receive item 8D. And I believe that would just go to the clerk. That would be the transportation study from phytotherapy.
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Motion to receive item 8G, and set up a special permit application hearing at the next council meeting on February 14th.
Council, are you okay with the meeting after the 14th?
I would just request that it would be, I will be unable to attend on the 28th, so if it could be the first meeting in March, I'd appreciate that.
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
And I did have two motions. First motion is to ask, motion that the Peabody Police Department Traffic Division look at increasing the enforcement at five corners in West Peabody, which would be Lake Street. I've gotten some issues, I've gotten some complaints of running stop signs and concerns, so if they could look at increasing the enforcement. So moved.
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Also, I'd like to make a motion, and if anybody's out there listening, since I've been at the meeting, I've been contacted that Lake Street is very dangerous. There have been reported of over four, at least four people who have flats this evening on Huntington Wood Drive. There's been water breaks. I would, I will reach out to the DPS first thing in the morning. I know there's a lot of potholes, I drove down here. But as I said, it's a dangerous situation right now at Lake Street. It's pretty much all over social media, and so I need to at least bring it to the attention and make that publicly known. So moved. Thank you.
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
All set. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilor. Council, your rest.
Thank you. Under consideration, I'd accept 8B, and follow the recommendations of the captain.
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Also, I'd like to accept 8E, and set up a special permit hearing for, I believe, the 14th.
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Like to accept 8A.
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Bear with me one moment.
Mr. President, on the motion, I want to rescind that. I was thinking he was referring to 7A. My apologies, Counselor.
Not a problem. Also, I'd like to, as a public service announcement, is to let the residents know that we have in Peabody a new website that's been built up by our department heads here. There's a lot of information on those sites, very worthy to look at it. Again, for the residents to know, to check out this website, and there's different areas of information. Hearings, I know Tim has posted, city council meetings, dates on that. I know the Department of Development, Kirk Beverly Lance, is putting notices up there of things that are being done in the city, and throughout the city hall, the different departments are posting. So, it's a website, it's been redone, it's not like the old one, it's pretty easy to navigate, I can even do it. So, it's, but it's worth a lot of information. So, I certainly recommend all the other councilors to begin to use it, utilize it, post information on that, because it's a good, worthy site. With that being said, all information that I'll be having, I'll be posting on that, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Gould. Thank you, sir. And Councilor Grevell.
Thank you, Council President. Under suspension of rules, I'd like to receive item 7A and refer to the Finance Committee.
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Under suspension of rules, I'd like to receive item 7B, and approve the positions as presented, and refrain from the reading.
Counselor, if you don't mind, could I defer to Council McGinn on that motion on 7B?
Like.
Comment on the motion.
On the motion, Mr. President, through you to Council Grevell. I have no issue with the motion, but there's one administrative issue on here, I think, that just needs to be cleaned up. This will be familiar to the clerk, because I've brought this up before. About halfway down on the second page, Mr. Gary Buah is on here as an appointee to the Community Development Authority. And to be very clear, I have absolutely no objection to that whatsoever, but he is, he's a city council appointee, not a mayoral appointee. So, I can, Mr. President, I can get a communication, refer the clerk, he may already have it, back to a communication that was provided by the council on the council appointees, so that we can get this one done properly. So, Councilor Grevell, the only request I would have is that you make your motion, less that one appointment, so that we can get that right in a subsequent communication. Thank you.
Sure. So, the motion is to approve the list as presented from, is honored the mayor, to approve the individuals listed in item 7B, less one individual, Gary Buah. And that will be taken care of by Council McGinn. So moved.
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Item 9A, Councilor Rozignol.
No further motions.
My apologies, Counselor. Councilor Rozignol, can you receive item 9A?
So moved.
Receive and approve, I'm sorry.
Receive and approve, all papers in order.
Counselor, you can go write down the list if you'd like, with 9B, C, D.
Make a motion to receive and approve Class II Motor Vehicle License Renewal for Ad Promotorsports, 15 Spring Street, all papers in order, JRM Auto Sales, Eddie Newberry Street, North Shore Automotive, 100 Bernie Street, and Spofford Automotive, 55 R Walnut Street. So moved. Class III Motor Vehicle License Renewals, NACE Auto Salvage, 0 Corwin Street. So moved.
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Make a motion to receive and approve Entertainment License Renewal for 2019 for Buddhist Tavern, 144 to 146 Washington Street, Gallinero Pizzeria and Bistro, 89 Main Street, Green Tea, 129 Newberry Street, Kelly Square Pub, 135 Washington Street, Palano Restaurant, 9R Silvan Street, and Stonewall Tavern, 139 Linfield Street. So moved.
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Can I get somebody to receive item 8C? Receive and approve, item 8C. By Councilor Gould, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. A motion to reconsideration from Council Mazzullis, and the clerk will read the motion.
Under notice of reconsideration, P4-19, motion by Council Mazzullis, be it ordered by the City Council, the city of Peabody, that the application from William Scoris, rare 170 Lynch Street, Peabody, Mass., for a special permit to convert the first-floor restaurant/tavern to eight, I believe it should be lodging house units, councilors, and other departments. I believe that was discussed at the last meeting. At 59-61 Walnut Street, Peabody, Mass., as filed in accordance with Sections 1.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the Peabody zoning ordinance, be approved based on the following reasons. The City Council has determined that the... The City Council has determined that the application as submitted and approved meets the general requirements of Section 6.1 of the Peabody zoning ordinance, specifically 6.1.2, which satisfies our desirable local need that is designed and appearance will not be injurious to the established or future character of the vicinity and the neighborhood. And that said approval is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance of the City of Peabody. Said motion failed, 7 to 4, with Counselors O'Neill, McGinn, Rozignol, and Turco voting in opposition.
On the motion to reconsider, roll call vote.
On reconsideration, a yes will mean that you do want to reconsider, and no vote means that you do not. On notice of reconsideration, there is no debate.
Mr. Chairman, for the people who are watching this, listening...
Counselor, there's no debate on the motion. It's a roll call vote, yes or no?
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Excuse me, I don't want to get confused because I've never been involved in a reconsideration vote. I don't even know what the procedure is. I'm learning it this evening. And I want to make sure that everybody understands it. I don't want anyone to get confused or vote for something they're not voting for or vice versa.
So a yes vote means that you do want to reconsider, and no vote means that you do not.
Yes.
Counselors Melville?
Yes.
O'Neill?
Yes.
McGinn?
No.
Rozignol?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Yes.
Sassla?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Motion to reconsider carries 10 to 1.
Thank you. And for the record and for anybody in the audience, this is a closed public hearing and therefore only open for discussion amongst the Peabody City Council. We do have the Community Development Director and the attorney which represented the petitioner here. If anybody has a question, for those, I will allow them to comment. With that, I'll open it up to the council. Counselor Matsulis, my apologies.
I'm going to ask, everything need be explained.
Would you like me to explain that to you or the clerk?
Yeah, please do. Please do.
Okay, so from the way I understand it and I could possibly be wrong, this is a closed public hearing that we, actually, we voted to close the public hearing. We took a vote on it. So on the motion to reconsider, which passed, this is a discussion on the reconsideration of the closed public hearing. So therefore, public participation is not allowed. If there is any new information that was not given to us in the first hearing, I would be more than welcome at your request or any other counsel's request to hear those issues.
Goodness, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Matsulis.
Okay. So we can speak on this this evening, am I correct? Okay. I've had a lot of different feelings over the past couple of weeks. I've had feelings of anger, feelings of hurt, feelings of frustration, feelings of sympathy, you know, all these feelings went through me because the issue was so important, okay? It was an issue of helping people and that's why we all run for public office. Now, am I going to change anybody's mind this evening? I'm going to tell you the truth. I don't think so, okay? But I hope so. I hope so. And I'm going to take one step at a time. I didn't practice for this. I just wrote this, just jotted a few minutes ago. First thing I want to bring out is prices of rooming houses. Salem, Beverly, Peabody, your lowest rents everywhere for housing are rooming houses. Okay? And I've called Salem, I've called Peabody, and I've called Beverly. I've called a rooming house. And those prices are all below market prices, way below. Now, um, some of the reasons for denying this permit, okay, is why I want to talk about them. The issue came up with inclusionary zoning, okay? I don't have a problem with inclusionary zoning, but I'm not going to put it in this permit. I'm going to let the proper people, when they get their paperwork and financing together and they meet and they do what they have to do, let them work that out. There were too many things involved in this conversation. In this conversation, there were questions asked like, what if he sells the property? There were, what if he raises the rent? Well, I can't do anything about that. If he wants to sell his property, that's his prerogative. And if he wants to raise the rent, that's his prerogative also. I have no control over that. Now, I don't want anyone, one of you, to think I'm talking behind anyone's back or I'm saying things that I shouldn't be saying. I talked to Counselor Turco earlier today. He called me up. And we had a nice conversation. And we were playing back and forth, you know. Do you think you could probably put in a condition? And I said, well, do you think that you could probably vote for this? You know, back and forth. Now, the issue of selling a building came up and Counselor Turco said, well, what if he sells it in the next five years? And I said, Counselor Turco, I'm going to go to him and have him write out a contract saying that he won't sell this building. Okay? Then he went from there to, well, what if he raises the rent? Well, that's his privilege. I can't, you know, do anything about that. But I really wanted his vote because I know the counselor is serious. I know he doesn't like the vote he gave, okay? And he's not a bad guy. And I'm not saying he is, okay? No one in this council is because everyone's here for the same reason. And I said to him, Counselor, I will write up a letter and I will give it to you. And I will stand by what I wrote. And if Mr. Scoris goes back on his word or pulls anything, I will resign from the City Council. I said, how much more can I do to make this work? Well, that offer's still there. I'm not running away from it, okay? But now, you see, vindictive, I'm not, never was. I can go into anybody's ward here and pick issues and tear them to pieces, and I won't, okay? And we've talked about that, so... Now, I want to go to the second issue. And in council, I'm still asking you, please consider giving a vote because it's too important. Now, I want to go to Counselor McGinn. Counselor McGinn, I have a lot of respect for because he came right out and told me months ago, Jim, I can't vote for this, okay? And I will give you the benefit of the doubt, Counselor. But there was one thing I didn't like and I've got to tell you that, okay? I thought that you were going to just not vote for it, but you became very vocal on it. And the thing that bothered me was you told me why you were against it. And I said, okay, I'm going to take your word, Counselor. And you brought these pictures in that showed Walnut Street flooding. And you showed it to everyone. You gave your reason, which is fine. And you added to it, you know, climate change. And, you know, I was getting confused after a while. But then you changed again and you went into, now you wanted 15% or 100% low income. Now I'm a little confused, you know. But Counselor, I'm not going to ask you, but I really wish you would vote for this because it's that important, okay? Now, and I'm not here to hurt anybody or make enemies because when this is over, I'm going to be friends with all of you. I don't hold bad feelings, okay? Now, the flooding issue, I just want to talk a little on that for a second because we all voted in an area that floods. And I could have had the pictures. I mean, I have pictures. I could have brought them in and showed you Foster Street floods. You know, we all know that, okay? But you know something? We voted to allow 21 units in the O'Shea Building. And you know something? I voted for that. And I'm the most outspoken people person when it comes to apartments and condos. I don't want them in my ward. But you know what? It was for the betterment of the city. It was to build a downtown, and I was willing to make that move, okay? And when you talk about flooding, I mean, you know, we made a deal to give them adequate parking in the parking lot. And when it floods, you know what? They're going to be walking in water to get to their car. I mean, so, you know, if we change our mind, there's an opportunity to change our mind. Okay? And then, Counselor O'Neill, I mean, I called him. And I called him because I talked to Mr. Scoris first. And I said, Bill, do you mind if I call Mr. O'Neill, Counselor O'Neill, and tell him the story why the fire violations? And Billy Scoris told me I could. And he said to me, I could even say it on the council floor, but I'm not going to, okay? It's a family that was not getting along. And I'm not going to tell you the issue or what happened. But Mr. Scoris has passed away since, and Billy Scoris corrected that. And I called Counselor O'Neill and I told him that. And Counselor, these are your words and I believe them, okay? But that was the impression you gave me, that it was the fire violations. And you went from there to, well, the flooding is what bothered me. Okay? Well, if you said that in the first place, you know, fine. But I'm just saying what you told me. And so you went from one issue to the other. And the bottom line is that Mr. Scoris corrected that and explained that issue, that water does not get in the building. He has all these high-priced, whatever you call it, that is pumping out the water here and there. Now, I'm going to... I do not like getting in front of this council and giving you people a history lesson on the City of Peabody and how we got here. I don't really enjoy it, to be honest with you. I've had people tell me, hey, Jim, I like that. I don't, but I do it because I have a ward that not many people understand. It's not like any other ward. I've said this before, okay? And it's funny that the three people, okay, that have voted against the people in that ward a couple of times are the only people I've never seen in Ward 3. I've seen Anne, I see you all the time, Counselor, I've seen you. You come to the Polish Club with me. You're almost a city council, Ward 3 council, but you're the Counselor at Large, Tom Gould, and everybody goes to you, okay? David, you're at the Portuguese dinners constantly, okay? So are you. The four counselors have voted against this. I've never seen them in my ward. I've seen Peter McGinn walk his dog down Walnut Street one time. I've never seen them in the Portuguese Bakery. I've never seen them in Olivera's, the great restaurant. I've never seen them in the Coffee House. I've never seen them in New England Meat Market. And forget that. I've never seen them in the Webster Street Industrial Park where a vote was taken and almost put 12 of the people out of work. And I, listen, I hope I'm not getting carried away, but I'm trying to bring out a point here. And like I said, I don't like talking like this. But I give you an invitation, all for you, to come to my ward and meet the people that you vote against. At least get to know the ward. And that is...
Counselor, my apologies. I just wonder if, and I hate to interrupt you. I just, we've all been to Ward 3, so I just wanted to make that clear. We've all been there.
Excuse me, Counselor.
If you have anything, Jermaine, for the permit.
Let me finish. Let me finish, Counselor. Counselor, let me finish. I've never seen you in Ward 3, okay?
Counselor, I'm going to tell you, my wife works at the Carroll School, which I'm there every single day to see my wife and pick her up. Okay, so I have been to Ward 3. I have shopped at the New England Meat Market. So please don't entertain the fact that I have not ventured through Ward 3. My daughter practices basketball at the Carroll School twice a week, Counselor. Thank you. So I have been to Ward 3, and I'll be there again tomorrow.
Let me finish, okay? And then you can take over the floor just like me.
Thank you, sir.
You can talk for an hour if you want. Right now, the floor is mine, okay? And I am hoping, okay, that the people that need help will get help, okay? Now, um, I want to make a couple of comments here also about the people living in that building, okay? That are getting help right now. They don't come from Ward 3. Let me tell you where three of them come from right now. One comes from Ward 2. The other one comes from Ward 4. And the other one, believe it or not, comes from Ward 6, okay? Ward 3 is helping people that I wish you had places in your own wards to help them. But you know what? They're welcome to come into Ward 3. And as I told you earlier, and I hope I've created no enemies here, and I hope I get no repercussions from this because you will have probably woken a wild animal, okay? I have an issue coming up in a couple of weeks that is very important to this city. And it may change the character of this whole city if we don't all work together on it. And that is one of the reasons that I keep talking about Ward 3 and what it is like and the history of it and what could happen and what has happened. And I am going to need the support of this whole council in this fight, okay? Now, there's going to come a time that we're all going to need each other. And I think it's time that... And I think it's time that, that we work together. You know, I don't want to get off. I probably already have gotten a little off and I've probably got a couple of people angry councillor. I didn't mean to, but the truth is, I haven't seen you there. You probably haven't, I believe you. I do believe you and I apologize.
Thank you councillor.
You're welcome. So, listen. My motion is staying the same. And if you people want to support me, go ahead. And, and if you don't, that's your vote. And I don't hold it against you. But I'm asking you, councillors, please reconsider, because it is not about me. And it's not about you and it's not about any of us. It's about helping people. And that's what I think we're all in this position for. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I say thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Rozignol.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to be a little bit all over the map just for a second. First of all, I did take offense to a couple of comments from councillor Mitsoulis as far as not ever stepping forward in Ward Three. I happen to be fourth generation Peabody. My grandmother grew up on Central Street. So, but I'm going to leave that alone. I do appreciate through the chair to Mr. Mitsoulis, I do appreciate your passion. I do appreciate what you're talking about, because ultimately, it's not about this council, it's about helping people. Okay? And I completely and utterly understand that. We're talking about helping homeless people. 100% every single councillor right here would be standing on this table doing whatever they think is right in their mind to help homeless people. The question is, is what's right? Okay? In my opinion, one of the things that we as a council have to do and have to look at, is it right to put anybody in a flood zone? Not only for this particular project, but for projects going forward, there's going to be a number of projects coming down the pike that we're going to be looking at and they're going to want to build in a flood zone. And is that what we want to do? Helping the homeless? Absolutely. That's, that's paramount. Right now, Massachusetts is one of the fastest growing populations of homeless. That's what it is. We need, we need a shelter in Peabody. We need to find adequate housing for everyone. First word I said was adequate. To me, putting people underwater is not adequate. Councillor Mitsoulis, I know you said that we approved the O'Shea Building. The first floor of the O'Shea Building is going to be business. If it floods, that's not going to affect people, it's going to affect things. That, to me, is the difference. Being new onto this council, the, the other, being on the outside, looking at the way this council operated in the past and not to the 11 people or 10 people in front of me, one thing that I always got frustrated with is, it would be arbitrary in my mind outside looking in on what special permit was approved, what ordinance we followed, what ordinance we didn't follow. This, to me, is similar in that vein. And I'm just going to read something to you. I know last meeting, we talked about non-conforming use and how we can expand on it. However, it says in our own ordinance, however, no special permit shall be granted for the purpose of increasing the number of residential units in a structure that entirely resides in three or more residential dwellings. That's in our ordinance. Now, I understand why councillors voted for this motion, because we need to do something about the homeless population. And I get it and I understand. My fear is that once we open up one Pandora's Box as far as going outside our own ordinances, what then can come down the pike to change and modify the ordinance that we literally have on the books? So that's my fear. And I didn't speak last meeting because I want to make sure what I was reading was accurate and on target. Through you, Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask councillor Kilty, is there any new information from last meeting to this meeting that you would like to present?
Councillor Kilty, please, you name an address for the record.
My name is John Kilty. I'm an attorney. I practice large, 40 Lowell Street in Peabody, Massachusetts. And I appear this evening on behalf of William J. Scorsus. And to your question, is there any new information? On last Friday, after the motion for reconsideration was filed, I supplied paperwork that represented a agreement to be entered into between the Community Development Department. And it included in it the affordable deed restriction that would become a part of this when my client, if and when he obtains a special permit, he is then able to present that to the Community Development Department. And we have a commitment to enter into a loan agreement with the department that would make all eight new units be counted in our affordable housing.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. So only the eight, not all 17, correct? Another point that was raised last meeting, and I thought it was an excellent point by councillor Manning Martin, the question you asked was NASCAP and their involvement. That, and as soon as they said that there was no direct link, that was a red flag to me, to be perfectly honest with you. It's an ancillary agreement. There's no contract, there's no, there's no guarantee that they're going to stay involved in this type of property, in this, in this particular property. So that, that was a concern of mine that you had raised and I appreciated that. I'll, I'll yield and see comments from other councillors, but thank you.
Councillor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too, councillor Mitsoulis, appreciate your passion for this issue. You, you truly do have a big heart and that's evident in all, in all the matters that come before the council. You lead with that. But I, as has been mentioned by a couple of other councillors, I really do need to take exception to this, to this notion that I've spent no time in Ward Three. That's frankly absurd. I mean, I've spent 55 years on Park Street in a very close proximity to Ward Three. I am in Ward Three almost daily. I, I, I am driving there, I am walking there, I am running there, and yes, I'm walking my dog there, as you apparently noticed one time. But it's outrageous to suggest that I spend no time in Ward Three. I spend nearly as much time there as I do in Ward Two, to be honest with you.
Councillor, I apologize.
I accept your apology and, and we'll put that behind us. As I said on January 10th, I, and I led with this, I do support the work of NASCAP and they are loosely tied to this, as councillor Rozignol pointed out. But I just, again, I can't support this application at this location. And the issue for me, as I stated before, is its location in a FEMA AE flood zone. The zoning language on this issue is clear. And this was pointed out by at least one other council colleague of mine, I think it was councillor Manning Martin at the January 10th hearing. One of the purposes stated in section 8.1 is, quote, "To provide that lands subject to seasonal or periodic flooding, as described in this ordinance, shall not be used for residence or for other purposes when such use will endanger the health or safety of the occupants thereof or the public generally." Shall not be used for residence. It can't be any more clear than that. And so while I understand and respect, again, while I understand and respect that other councillors have different opinions on this application, I would request an equal measure of respect for my position, which is, which is tied to this concern. There's been other projects in the past where this issue has been less of an issue to me and you, and you raised one councillor Mitsoulis tonight. But my, my understanding of this has changed as I've learned more about the associated risks. And, and this is going to be pervasive for me over time. This flooding concern is real and it is going to increase based on what we know is happening with climate. There is, they, those issues are one and the same. You said I brought, brought that up as a secondary issue. That's not a secondary issue. It is tied definitively to the flooding issue. We know there's going to be more frequent and intense storms. We know there's going to be sea level rise and we know this is an AE zone, AE flood zone. These are things that, that need to be contemplated as we, as we deal with development issues here and elsewhere. This is stuff that, that was reinforced to me and hopefully to other councillors in September 2018, when the city's participation in the state's municipal vulnerability program was explained to the city council. This, this impacts my thinking on this application, again, not just this one, but others that, that are likely to come before us going forward. And that issue of precedent that, that councillor Rozignol referred to is, is, is very significant to me. The fact is, my position on this has nothing, nothing at all to do with the, with the fact that these are single-room occupancy, rooming house units. I would have precisely the same concern if these were, if this was a proposal for luxury condominiums. It would be the same exact concern. I just, I hope that nobody here on this council or nobody listening to this or others that might have differing opinions on this with respect to housing would attempt to vilify me in terms of support for affordable housing. My family lives in an area where I am surrounded by affordable housing, much of which my wife Jeanette and I helped to put there. But we did that with significant donations of, of time and labor, our time, our labor and financial contributions. So I am not the enemy of affordable housing. And, and I hope nobody is, is either on this council or others that may, you know, hear this, this evening would, would try to paint me as such. When the affordability issue came up councillor Mitsoulis on January 10th, I commented on it. I was going to vote the way I was going to vote, you knew that and you've acknowledged that tonight and I appreciate that very much. But I, I couldn't sit there silently on the issue with respect to affordable housing. You know, my, I was going to vote the way I was going to vote, but knowing that there was a chance that probably, or a high likelihood that, that, you know, I might be on the losing end of that one, I can't, I couldn't sit there silently and see the city not get credit for the, for these units on the subsidized housing inventory. It doesn't, it makes no sense to me whatsoever to not make progress to the 10% goal that we have for affordable housing. That would be a, a lost opportunity and frankly, one that makes no sense whatsoever because we know these are going to be, as I think I termed it on January 10th, small A affordable. So why don't we get credit for them in the subsidized housing inventory as capital A affordable housing? So if the council were to miss, miss that issue, that would be a huge problem for me. And, and it would be the same problem in any residential development, not just this one, but any development that's before us. The inclusionary zoning issue needs to be impacted. And, and this one is a bit unique because it doesn't kick in automatically. And I pointed this out on January 10th because of the language of the ordinance that the zoning district that this is in is not listed. The reason it's not listed is because residential uses are not allowed here. So you refusing to put the condition on means that somehow, something that's truly going to be affordable would get missed. It would not automatically get picked up by the IZ ordinance. And that's what I was trying to point out. I can't, I could, I can't for the life of me understand why we would want to let that go through on a technicality like that. We, we are, it, it would normally happen as normal course that they would need to comply with that. In this instance, that was not a given because of the, of the unusual nature of this coming before us as a pre-existing non-conforming. There were no solid answers that came when councillors had raised this issue, myself and others. And now we've got two communications from, one from Community Development and one from the applicant's attorney specifically addressing this comment. We heard, we heard councillor Kilty address one of those this evening. The fact that that information was missing on January 10th, 2019, on an application that was submitted to the clerk on February of 2018 is dumbfounding. I, I mean, we had almost a year transpired from when this thing was initiated to when we took it up. And nobody brought forward this information on affordability. And if we look at the dates on the information from the, that was provided by attorney Kilty, that loan agreement was, was dated February 2018. And nobody thought it was important to bring that up at the last hearing. I, that, I, for the life of me, cannot understand why that happened, however it did. And the information, however, is now available and hopefully that'll address some of the questions that I think many of us had on January 10th. I certainly did. I, I think that all councillors wrestled to some extent with their votes to varying degrees on this application. This has been one of those ones that has been a bit heart-wrenching. I, I, those that know me well know that I take a lot of things to heart and I can share with you that I've, I've literally lost sleep on this one. So, so please don't think that anything that I have done here has been taken lightly. But again, I, I, I was clear up front on my rationale for not supporting this. I'm going to stay consistent on that. But I, I can most certainly understand why other councillors might support it and I fully respect those opinions 100%. And again, I would, I would just ask that, that, that same consideration be given back to me as your fellow councillor. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councillor Melville.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Through you, can we have Kurt Bellevance from Community Development come up just to clarify some of the, the points that have come up since that last hearing? Good evening, Kurt Bellevance, Community Development Director. So if there's a question, I'd be happy to answer that.
Can you just explain a little bit about the, the loan process that we, just to solidify some of the questions that we might have had that came up in that last hearing and that, are you currently in agreement with the petitioner?
Yeah. So in fact, the petitioner came before the Community Development Authority. Last February, the Community Development Authority did vote to grant a loan to the applicant on the condition that the units would, would become affordable. In the process of, of that, representative from NASCAP was there to talk about the program that they've been working with Mr. Scorsus on. We like that. We know the units can't count towards inclusionary zoning because it's not in a district that calls for that. So what we did was, we offered the suggestion of having community development block grant funds be part of that because there's three, there's basically a three-pronged approach to getting the units counted on, on the subsidized housing inventory list. One is to have it subsidized, which we will use community development funds with. One is to have a deed restriction that's filed with the deed. That would be in place for 20 years, so it would be in place until 2039. That's a nine-page document outlining what they can charge for rent, how they charge it, how it's monitored and so forth. So we add that on to it. And then the last one is the, I believe, the rents, the rents have to be charged a certain amount of, based on that, which was written out in the deed restriction. So all part of that was, was through the process of, of allowing the loan and the grant through community development to, to move forward. Contingent on the property owner receiving the special permit, which was the final step, it's our understanding that that's the process, going through getting other issues in place and then coming before the council. And unfortunately, that information wasn't, wasn't presented that evening. So we are, we tried to provide a better memorandum in regards to that and our office actually So we tried to provide a better memorandum in regards to that, and our office actually is working on trying to get more information before the city council, so you have as much information as you can. So that's one goal that we're trying to do within community development. So that, basically, here, we've been, we've been working with the property owner in NASCAP to move forward on that. Hopefully, that answers some of your questions.
Through you, Mr. President. I guess the last, so essentially, you'll be signing off on this particular loan when, after, if the special permit is approved, you would be signing off on that, correct?
Correct.
So essentially, and by doing that, it's going to require all the, you had mentioned that there's other requirements that fall into place and monitoring that will go forward with this particular loan and how it's structured?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I just have, I supported this special permit when it came up a couple weeks ago. I think this information kind of, for me, it comforts me knowing that really the city's Community Development Authority has seen fit to give them a loan to increase our stock of affordable housing. I think it's important to stay focused on the particular issue here tonight, and I'm going to do that. I appreciate all the comments of my fellow councilors and their opinions, and it's been a learning experience the last year or so being on the council with all of you. I respect all of you immensely and the backgrounds that you bring. But with this particular special permit, I think this is an example of government acting in accordance with what the guidance was given to this community development, that we're using funds to increase our housing stock, our affordable housing stock. And there's very valid opinions both ways, but essentially, community development has already given that they feel comfortable moving forward in this direction by approving this loan back in February. And I think it's very valid to ask why some of this information wasn't provided when we were asking it at the time. But I think having community development here tonight, they're ultimately going to sign off on this particular loan, and frankly, one of the conditions of getting the loan is our approval. I think that will be plenty of oversight built into the lending process as it is set up, and so I do feel comfortable supporting that again tonight. Thank you very much, Mr. President. I appreciate you allowing other people to speak also, Mr. President. I know it's not typical with a closed public hearing, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilor, Councilor O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, you know, at the risk of beating a dead horse, Councilor Monsulis, you did reference me, so I want to address it while I am a current resident of Ward 6 and have been for almost 50 years. My parents were very good friends and dear friends with the Communa's family, who owned a store on Center Street. And we would go down, Central Street, and we would go down there a couple times a month. He owned like a store. We'd go in back and hang out, have some donuts, and they'd been lifelong friends. I played soccer on the field. I coached lacrosse for PBD Youth three times a week at that same field. I've seen Tim, so I have not given you--
I apologize to you, too.
Thank you. I just, let's, I do want to just, I want that to be on record that I don't think we should talk about whether someone does or does not vote for an issue in someone's ward, and it's against them, the people. It's issues, and people can met things differently. I really can't state anything more eloquently than what Councilor Melville, Councilor Rosinol, as well as Councilor Melville said tonight. They all bring up good points. As you know, I voted for the reconsideration of this vote tonight because I wanted to hear more information. I have, however, you know, the three points that still cause me concern about this particular special permit. And I do want to just back up for a second. I do want to caution anyone who may be watching, listening, or other councilors that we really can't judge, or shouldn't judge someone on their vote, or whether they are a supporter or are not a supporter of affordable housing without knowing, A, their own family history or their parents' family history. It's just a dangerous thing to do. I just, I ask you all to judge people on their reasons for the vote, not on whether they support it. Because who doesn't believe that we should try to help out others in needs? We all do it every time we come down here, and we do it in our own lives, giving donations and charity and working for the good of others. That's what we do. However, at the end of the day, as Councilor Rosinol and Councilor McGinn said, this is a new residential unit, a number of them going in on a ground floor in an area that is prone to flooding. And thanks to the city government of PBD, as well as some state and federal funds, a tremendous amount of work has been done to help mitigate and reduce that, the likelihood of serious flooding. However, I don't think it's, you know, as Councilor Rosinol said, it's prohibited in zoning, and I don't want to set that precedent personally, that we're allowing ground-floor new housing in an area that's prone to flooding. I don't think that's the thing I'm comfortable doing. It's a great cause. I get it. People have need, and unfortunately, the need is getting greater and more serious. And I understand Councilor Monsulis's comments that this is a good thing. That shouldn't mean that we should base our decisions on whether it's a good thing or a bad thing. The idea is that zoning should apply to all areas of the city that make sense to keep people safe and to make sure that we follow our own zoning ordinances. And for that reason, I'm not going to vote in favor for this. Thank you.
Councilor Gravel.
Yes, thank you, Council President. And just a point of clarification on something that Councilor Melville had suggested is, at any time after a public hearing, the council has the right to solicit expert testimony from the attorney, from an engineer, from community development. So you shouldn't feel like that's not allowed. It certainly is allowed. The closure of the public hearing only disallows anybody else who's not called upon from coming up and making a comment, and there's good purpose for that. And I think those of us that sat on the school committee understood that very well. Sometimes you had to take a beating in a public hearing, and you couldn't say anything because it's a public hearing. But you shouldn't be, if there is any point anybody here wants to get expert testimony on, they're allowed to ask for it, so.
It's one reason I miss sitting next to you, Dave.
So the, I would ask that Kurt Bellavance come back up as the Director of Community Development, and I just had, there were a couple of things in the agreement, and I would agree with Councilor McGinn on the fact that I kind of wish this was, we probably could have avoided this whole thing if we had this information in front of us because it's pretty clear. But there are a couple of clauses in there that I thought were intelligently put into this document, and I wanted to get your opinion on why they were. The alienation clause, which basically, to me, says that they don't even have the right to convey or sell the property during the term of the loan. Is that correct?
If you're referring to the deed restriction, that's the deed restriction, or are you referring to the promissory note that would be of the loan?
In the promissory note, it says in the alienation clause, during the term of this loan, the term is, it's a 10-year loan with a 20-year amortization schedule. The property shall not be sold, transferred, mortgaged, encumbered, leased as a single unit, or conveyed to any other entity, individual, or individuals in the whole or in part. So basically, that restriction was put in there. I don't know why it was put in there, but I think it was intelligently put in there, basically saying you can't take the loan and then walk away from it during the term and expect that you're going to be able to get rid of the conditions. And that was further backed up. If you looked at other conditions, you also had other condition number, I believe it was number seven, where, again, I'm just curious as to why you put it in there. It says, "The parties here to agree that this commitment shall survive," and the commitment was the affordability aspect, "shall survive the loan closing, and unless otherwise, set forth herein that each and every one of the obligations," which includes the affordability restriction, "and undertakings of the borrowers set forth in this commitment shall be continuing obligations and undertakings." In other words, read from the layman's perspective, whether you're out of the loan or not, the restriction continues for whatever said period you put in there. So if you put a 20-year deed restriction in there, basically, the owner is hamstrung from being able to back off that commitment. And I think that's important to know because, I mean, and clearly, I think it would have helped knowing ahead of time, because I think that was the major concern with some folks here, that, you know, if all of a sudden he gets the loan, decides to pay it off, all deal is off. We had eight units in, now we don't have eight units in. I think that was the fear factor, and it looks to me like you buttoned that hole pretty good with this agreement. And then if you go on to read the next agreement, which is the affordability restrictions, it's even, it's even more tightly wound into it so that, basically, it said to me, no matter what they do, he is living with this, and these units are destined to be affordable for 20 years under deed restriction until it's released. Am I correct?
You are correct, although I can't take credit for writing either one of those. Those are attorneys that have written those. We just accept them, so.
Well, I won't normally give any attorney, you know, a lot of credit, but clearly, those conditions, to me, are what put the cement in my thinking that I would like to proceed with allowing these units. I do understand the different councilor's perspectives on flooding. I think the opposite side of that argument is going to be that as it increases, we are going to have to increase our thinking about how we're going to cope with it because more and more land is going to be subjected to it. And every other community is seeing this, whether it's Salem, Boston, Levee, I've heard it all. You know, we have a lot of residential units that are in areas that are becoming more flood-prone and therefore require more mitigation effort to allow them to continue to be used as residential. And so I think it's going to be really on us at some point in time to take a look at and say, what are the things that we want to see if we are to allow units, residential units? I think this one is, yes, it's in the flood zone, it floods mildly, and, but I certainly don't think it's any different if they're living on the second floor or the first floor because, you know, what are you, what the concern would be in flooding, from my perspective, is it creates mold when you dry it out, and then it has to be repaired. I had an office building right there at 49 Lowell Street that I had to do that whole ordeal with, and it wouldn't matter. I couldn't say to the people, I couldn't say to the workers on the second floor, "Well, it's safe for you to be in here because you're up above where the water is. It's the effects of the water, and it travels throughout the building," so I had to get rid of it. So in a situation where a unit floods or two units flood, it's going to impact the whole, not the part, whether it's on that street or on this corner of Main Street and Foster. You know, you have to contain the damage that's done. And, you know, more for me, more is the fact that most utilities are down in basements, and as in basements, if they're impacted by water, it could cause shorting and fire and anything else. Wouldn't matter if you're on the second floor or the first floor in that case, you're still, it could be in harm's way. So if we were to take that stand always, we would never be able to put anything where you ever get any chance of flooding because you'd be putting people in danger as well. So I certainly understand the ordinance. I understand the argument for the ordinance for sitting today. But I think we do, there is a special permit process, and there is, us, our ability to discuss these things is given to us for that reason. In the event that the ordinance is too rigid to be able to find the wiggle room within the ordinance, I just think it's there for a purpose. So I respect what other people believe, and believe me, water and I have never been best friends. I'm told I have the worst water sign in the world everywhere I go. I either have some pipe breaking, some place flooding, and I have to deal with it. So, but I certainly, it's less of a concern for me, particularly when the landlord, when I asked the question the last time about mitigating efforts, what are you doing to mitigate? And he said pumps. Well, that's a pretty good mitigating effort because if you can stop the water from coming in, you can keep the residents in that area dry, you can prevent the mold that will ultimately occur, and you can have a unit that would work. Now, whether or not you can pump out fast enough, if I take verbatim what he said he had for pumps, he probably could drain Brown's Pond the way it sounded. So clearly, I think he's made the effort to mitigate, and I think that goes on the positive side of the equation for me. If there were no mitigating efforts, I think I would be more prone to say, "Only if you put in mitigating efforts." And some mitigating efforts may not be as attractive as others. But I know in Boston, they're talking about putting residential property on stilts, or they're talking about putting walls around residential properties to stop floodwater from coming in. Those might be things we're going to have to consider at some point in time if it gets as bad as people think it's going to get. And I believe reports. I'm not one who believes that science is fiction. I think it's true, that there is going to be increasing water. But it's going to be up to us to figure out how to live with it because we're not going to change it. So I intend to support this again, and I appreciate having the document in front of me that basically says, "He buys the loan, he's stuck with the conditions, period." Thank you.
Any other councilors? So just a-- Councilor.
Yeah, Councilor Turco. I don't want to say out of frustration or out of, maybe I will, maybe out of frustration myself, but that comment that I made was not called for, okay, about the four of you not coming down to Walnut Street. I went to school with your aunt. I already told you that. And it was not meant the way I said it, and I'm so sorry. I don't know how to apologize for that. So, I mean, you guys are PBD guys. You're like me. So of course you've been to Walnut Street. Of course you guys have been down there. I mean, apologize. Okay?
Counselor, thank you very much. I do have to say you're a good man. The issues that were brought up, if you remember the January 10th meeting, the only issue that I brought up was the inclusionary zoning. And I realized that the GBD is not covered in the inclusionary zoning. The reason it's not covered, as we've already gone over, is because we don't allow housing in the GBD. This was a pre-existing nonconforming use. I merely asked for a guarantee from this council. I trust no developer at his word, best friend, neighbor, and I trust no attorney at their word. It's not why I took this job. I took it with my heart and as I think all of you did. And the implication that any of us don't care about homeless or our communities, there's no more, you can't find 11 people in this city that give more than all of us. And whether we disagree on a vote at any point in time, I'll attest to that till the day I die. I know that 10 of you give everything, and I think you know me well enough to know that I give everything I can to this city, into my ward. Tired, four days I was at Logan Airport. Guess what I did when I came home? I drove around to see if there was anywhere else that didn't happen to melt in 54-degree weathers, weather. That's what we do. That's why we took these jobs. We didn't take it for the $10,000. So I don't mean to preach, but here's what happened when I got elected three years ago. They gave me this big book, and we all have it in this drawer, and it's our zoning ordinances. And there's a lot of it in there. And you know what? I'm a layman. I'm a guy that, I'm a heavy equipment operator by trade 25 years. I came here, I wanted to help people, but they gave me this guidance. They gave me this book. And anybody that knows me knows that I do my homework. I study every issue, whether it's in your ward, your ward, or anywhere in this city, I study it because I want to know what I'm talking about when I get to this table, and I want to do the right thing. Am I always perfect? No, far from it. But I try my best. With that being said, these are the things that I came up with. 8.1, "The flood boundary and wetlands. To provide the land subject to seasonal and periodic flooding as described in this ordinance shall not be used for residence for purposes when such use will endanger the health and safety of the occupants thereof, of the general, the public generally." That's fine. That's just one ordinance, it's a Councilor McGinn's point. So then you can use the excuse, "Well, this is a pre-existing-- So then you can use the excuse, well, this is a pre-existing non-conforming. To Counselor Rosenall's point, Section 1.5.1 gives us all the reasons why we can support a non-conforming use, and it gives you two exceptions. One, however, no special permit shall be granted for the purposes of increasing the number of residents in a structure that is entirely residential with three or more residential dwellings. This exactly meets that description, it's entirely residential. So that's number two. Number three, Section 6.1.1.2, general, the provisions of the, this is the inclusionary zoning. The inclusionary zoning covers the R2, R3, R4, R5, BN, R1, R1A, R1B, doesn't cover the GBD. First thing I noticed, why isn't the GBD in there? So I moved to GBD. I moved to Section 3.2.1.3, GBD. Says, "To provide for office, retail, and service, small-scale production businesses where noise and truck traffic impacts are minimal, businesses should be primarily accessed by pedestrian, and properties should be maintained, maintain equality, aesthetic, and consistency with the historic downtown setting wherever possible." Last line, residential uses are not allowed, in our own definitions, that many of us voted on. We put them here. These are the rules that we set forth. So then we, that's fine. So that explains why it's not in the inclusionary zoning, because they contradict each other. So we're not supposed to do this. So then we can move forward to the table of uses, GBD. Nowhere does it say rooming house is allowed there. So what we did was, when this application was first proposed to us a year ago, it said apartments. Guess what? Doesn't meet the definition. So we changed it. We said, "Let's call it a rooming house, doesn't meet the definition." There's nowhere in the GBD is it allowed for a rooming house. So again, it was changed a third time during the meeting, efficiency units. So let's call it whatever fits. Now, with all that being said, that was my job, and that's what I did, and I went through that like I believe all of you do. And then, at the end of that, I said, "This is about NASCAP, and this is about homeless. So I'll accept that we're going to circumvent all those ordinances, and I'll be okay with it, but I want to make sure that affordability is here forever." Not that I'm going to make Mr. Scors a rich man, and he's going to have 17 units, tomorrow flip the property, tell NASCAP, "I have no deal with you, I'll go up on the prices." I wanted some guarantee. That's all I asked this council for. I said twice, twice, "I will support this permit with that condition." It was basically ignored. So here we are today. I wish, as Counselor Gravell said, that I had that information, this would be a moot point. On that, I just want to say, I just want to ask Mr. Bellavance one question. Is the agreement signed? Is the loan signed? Is there any, because I've seen a loan, but I see no signatures, I see no agreement.
No, not yet. It was basically conditioned on them receiving special permit, although we do have an affidavit stating that the property owner would follow through with all those, all that, the loan, the affordability, the deed restriction, and so forth, once they did receive a special permit. So we do have an affidavit stating that.
Thank you very much. With that, Counselor Manning-Martin. I am not, I just have one more statement to make. I just ask that, we're going to disagree, all of us, at some point. You're going to disagree with things in my ward. Please don't ever doubt of why we all do this, any of us. We shouldn't. And you don't need me to lecture you, but I know you all, I've known you all for three years. I've disagreed with you, and then I've gone out and had a drink with you. And then, two weeks later, I've been at a golf tournament or a fundraiser or something with you. I know that you all give everything to this. But I don't appreciate the fact that this was spun around to be a homeless issue. This was never a homeless issue. This was an issue regarding the PBD zoning and the rules set forth that councils prior to us for 100 years put in place. And they handed it from councilor to councilor, and they said, "Hey, these are the things that we came across over the last 100 years, you should really be aware of this," and here they are. And that's what I followed. And, you know, I'm sorry if I did that, but those are the rules that I got. Counselor Manning-Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Mr. Bellavance. You mentioned an affidavit. Is that part of the loan process, or did you just do that for this one applicant?
No, we had it for this applicant.
Are we setting a precedent that we're going to have applicants sign affidavits?
It's not any precedent that we've been setting, we just want to make sure that people are aware that, you know, this is, we do this every day.
...that is going to follow ordinances and our laws. I really think that that would not be beneficial to the image of the City of PBD moving forward for businesses or people coming forward for a special permit to be handed and expected to sign an affidavit that they're being truthful. I think that that's very bad form, and I don't expect that that was something that, yeah, I'll just leave it at that. Wherever it came from, I'm not saying that that was your idea or your initiative, but I think it's very bad form in moving forward. I think that we should not do that. Thank you very much.
Just to clarify, it wasn't our idea, we didn't ask or offer it. It was offered to us, I think the, maybe they just didn't, they wanted to felt, let people know that their word meant their word, so it's something they--
Well, I would expect that coming forward through the process by which we've operated for, as I already said, 100 years, is a process that would promote continued honesty, and the processes are in place for that reason, and that we would respect people to come forward and be truthful and be good business people and good residents to follow the rules and be true to their word without an affidavit. And that's the last I'll say. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Manning-Martin. And just for the record, Counselor Kelty, and his client voluntarily, signed that off affidavit with no request from anybody. So that was offered to the city. But thank you, Counselor Mutzulis.
The motion is before us, as is, as stated on January 10th, right now.
On the motion from January 10th to approve, roll call vote.
Counselors Mutzulis.
That's on my original motion, correct?
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neill.
No.
McGinn.
No.
Rosenall.
No.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gravell.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn?
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.